It is 6:30. I call the meeting to work. First order of business is public comment. If anybody has a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less, and raise your comments to the board and not to the audience. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? No. Okay. Item number three, John Dunster.
Good evening. John Dunster, Revision Energy. I would like to also take a minute and introduce Elijah Garrison, who's our Director of Commercial and Institutional portion of our business, several years' experience in terms of working in municipalities, probably the best person to answer our questions if we get some questions that I can't answer at all at this point in the process. I thought it would be helpful, real quick, for me to recap where we are, what we've looked at, tell you what I walked away with from our last meeting, and what we presented to Julie last week. So, prior to getting involved with the process, we had provided the town with, I think, four or five different options. Some rooftop options, which were later basically expressed that we did not, your fire chief, I believe, didn't want to put the solar on the roof of any of the buildings, so it wasn't him.
He didn't tell us not to, chose not to based on what he told us. There's no law against it.
Yeah. Okay. So, I apologize. My understanding is that rooftop is not preferred.
There you go.
We looked at a couple of different ground mounts, and when I met with the Energy Committee, it was my takeaway that we were trying to offset essentially 100% of the town's co-op power, approximately 160,000 kilowatt-hours at the time. I think Julie pointed out, last time after the LEDs were installed, that usage is coming down, so that target that we were initially trying to reach has changed, and I still think you haven't even left the period in which the LEDs are, so it's still a moving target at this point. Last meeting, we and Barbara with the Energy Committee presented a couple of different options in terms of ground mounts. We talked about the field here, we talked about the option over here on the west side of the field, we talked about back behind the field, of several different options that we were looking at. Again, the idea was to try to find a 100 KW ground mount site that would still offset 100% of the town's power. The idea of building one larger system and capitalize on the efficiencies of construction, which would result in a lower PPA rate, that was our goal. I don't think, we also presented at the last meeting, the idea of signing an ORYA, and the purpose of that would be, A, it was a template for you to have legal review of it, to get comfortable with that document. It was also the opportunity to discuss how we could collaborate and get a project nailed down that we could actually build. So, we, I don't know where that stands right now, but Chairman Bigby, Bugby, you suggested that we look at a smaller project behind this building, actually two systems, with one smaller one being connected to this.
Over there. I'm not in favor of over here, I'm in favor of over there.
Where is over there?
Over there on that side of the building?
That's the east side.
Yes.
My area, because I totally took it as the west side. I don't know how I did that. My notes indicated to build a smaller system over there. The problem with the way back beyond that field is it's so far away that the building and the trenching of that, we lose that efficiency. And I thought we discussed that, but again...
That's just me.
Yeah, no, we did discuss that, and we did discuss that you lose efficiency because you have to trench too far and so on and so forth.
So, that was my takeaway, and our discussions with Julie last week were the findings of that particular project. Building something close, cost-effective to the building here. So, we came down on, and you know, when I say to my engineering staff that I'm looking for a system half the size, it always doesn't work out to be exactly half. So, effectively, they came down with a 56 KW system, a little bit under the half of what we discussed. It will offset somewhere in the neighborhood of about 70 or 80% of the load of this building. And we did an analysis also on the net meter, because again, I think Julie rightly said we need to understand because there's such a rate difference between what you would be paid from the co-op versus your behind-the-meter savings. So, we looked at that as well. The system came, as I said, in at 56 KW. The cash flow, which I think you people have been given is essentially, we're looking at something, starting out in year one, the effective cash flow of the project would be about $1,000, and growing slightly each and every after that, year after that. So, basically, what we're trying to do from the marching orders is understand to build a project that would provide green energy to the town, and also be cash positive, at least from year one, if at all possible. So, that's where we are. Any specific questions in terms of the information we provided?
Any questions?
No. I don't have any questions. I do have a concern. Where is the, we talk about the transfer station and the public safety complex. Have we looked at what the requirements or what the location would be, given the TCVC project? I.e., what's the impact of that on our solar requirements? And does that change considerably what it is we want to do?
Well, in terms of the biggest usage is this building, second biggest use is the transfer station. The other buildings are down on the list in terms of usage, so I can't tell you...
So, the solar requirements for the new town center, we're just not looking at that right yet?
I would say that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
Plus, it hasn't been approved.
Right.
The boarders could say, "I don't want any of it." So, we're planning for something that doesn't have to be...
Okay. Just wanted to be...
Hopefully, they will, but you never can tell.
I just wanted to get it out.
Well, I understand your question in the sense that we had discussed for what, a single-floor or a double-floor municipal building, I would assume it would have all the energy efficient as much as possible. Probably a lot more efficient than this building to begin with.
You would hope so.
You would hope so. If you're going to build something, you might as well put the latest materials and development into it. Yes, I understand. So, I guess we're still focusing here, which is on the public safety complex.
Any other questions?
No.
So, the board doesn't have any questions in terms of even the math, or how one arrives at the net savings?
Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
My question, well, not my, it's not a question, it's an observation, because in terms of these, it's assumption that the $102,757 doesn't come at a cost to the town. There's a cost of not having that to be utilized by the town.
Yeah.
So...
The $102,000 for the buyout after the fifth year?
Yeah, if we... So, there's a cost of money.
Of course there is.
So, like, for instance, in terms of, you know, what we're getting for our investments, if you look at that, so these savings are not as high as what we expect to believe. The other thing I have is in terms of, we've got this grid that goes out for 40 years. Technology is changing. We're assuming a lot of stuff. But in terms of savings for $1,000 a year, I don't know. I'm not, it's not a no-brainer. So, I'm a little bit not in favor. I like green energy, but I'm not sure.
Just a couple of things to consider. The $1,000 is the first year.
Yep.
The number gets larger years two through five.
Yep.
Assuming we buy it, after year five, the number becomes a negative for the next seven, six or seven years.
Yep.
And then turns into a positive, so that after, I think it's 20 years, the estimate is a savings of, I think it's $68,000, $68,000, $38,000, the numbers are still...
So, for 20 years, we're saving, what, $2,000 a year?
Right. In addition to that, again, obviously, the thing that the Select Board needs to consider is whether the town of Lee wants to have a solar array, power any or all of the town buildings. I'll just throw it out there that in 2018, when we had the Warren article that allowed us to move forward, almost 83% of the voters said they wanted a solar array. So, it does seem to be something that the voters are interested in. I mean, I agree, I absolutely have your concerns relative to the savings, especially in that first year. It's so close as to be not negligible for the sake of, okay, we're not making money, but it might make one nervous if the numbers went slightly a different way.
There's some risk in there.
There's, although I think Revision will tell you the risk is all on the part of the investors.
Well, after the buyout, the risk is at the town.
Yes. I mean, and to your point about technology, that is absolutely true. There are those solar panels in this state, I believe, I was told, as old as 50 years old and still functioning. And certainly, there are solar panels that are 20 years old and still functioning.
So, yeah, so I think there's, and the longevity of the panels is correct. And right now, you can look at the, unlike a cellphone or something like that, solar has not literally seen leaps and bounds. Everything's been incremental in terms of the gains. Julie talks, mentioned something about the investor being the one in the most risk area, because they're the one that needs that generation you to buy the power for them to get their money back. And as far as the buyout, that's an option. You know, if for some reason you looked at year three or four, and the system wasn't doing what it was performing, hitting the numbers that we thought it would be, you might say, you know what, we're not ready to buy it. You can, after year five, you have the option to buy it at any point after then. And the price goes down each and every year. So, but I would ask you, what would you look at a project and say, "We're interested in moving forward"? What would it look like to you?
I'm not sure at this particular moment. I do have a question, though. The purchase option is 171-262. Does that include everything? So, is that like turnkey?
So, the outright purchase, you mean? Outright development?
I guess in terms of the whole project. Is there going to be any cost to the town, years zero through whenever?
So, no.
Like, for instance, you have to do trenching, I assume that's in there.
Yes.
Connecting to our internal structure.
Correct, it's in there.
So, everything that's in there.
And we actually added, because there was so much question in terms of the clearing of the land, we actually put that into the cost of this project. So, that question of what's it going to cost, how are we going to arrange all that, we've already baked it into this. So, this is a turnkey, fully loaded. So, if you're looking at it from the terms of what investment, what cost would be to the town before the system is up in there, we're talking about nothing at all. This would be a contract between us and the owner of the system. Basically, we would ask you to sign a lease, a long-term lease for a nominal amount, which allows them to keep it there. And then if you buy that array after year five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, whatever the case may be, at that point, if you chose to, you could sign the maintenance contract with Revision Energy, which 80 or 90% of our people do. And then you would see, if you actually look at this spreadsheet, you'll notice that in year, after year five, you'll see operating expenses. So, I'm going to get the sixth column over, you'll see that. That's a maintenance contract. So, this, and then if you come down to year 20, you'll see that jump up several thousand dollars. That's the replacement of the inverter, the guts of the solar system. So, what we like to present is a fully loaded turnkey project. So, if you choose to buy the system, you can know that our expenses are already built in there.
So, the maintenance contract, because the system comes with a 12-year warranty, correct?
Various pieces of it come with warranties, but it's not necessarily a 12-year warranty. So, depending on the modules themselves, there are 12, or 20 or 25-year production warranty. It's pretty linear, goes down a half a percent every year. The inverters are warranted mostly around 10 years, and the workmanship is a five-year thing, so anything with that. And what we know of electronics or anything in your house typically, there's going to be a problem. It's early on, if it's a bad design or a bad program.
So, this maintenance contract covers, is there going to be any out-of-pocket for us as a town?
So, the main...
Maintenance contract.
So, the maintenance contract here is for us to monitor the system, come out and do an annual inspection each year. If there was something that wasn't covered, if a panel goes bad, that basically we'll go back to the manufacturer and say, "Okay, give us the warranty, and this includes the labor for that." I can't imagine, but if something else kind of outside the realm of it, a tree came out and we had to come out and rebuild it, that would be an insurance issue, and there would be labor in charge with that.
I have some questions. I noticed that in the, what I have here that was provided to me, your three blue stripes over here is, park them outside, going west at this point.
Yes.
And which way would they slant, which way would they face? Towards the road?
Yes. Yeah, so that's the south. As you see them oriented right here.
Okay.
They're facing true south.
True south at this point.
Yeah.
And these are fixed panels, aren't they?
These are fixed panels.
Where would the trenches go?
So, the trenching would be done off the backside. It would come from where the path is that goes directly across, you know, there's like a paved path back here.
Okay.
That is just almost directly across to the electrical gear, and that's where it would go.
Okay. My opinion on this is that, you know, I think the town of Lee, the citizens are very interested in green energy as much as possible. You know, obviously, with the transfer cycle operation, trying to recycle as much as they possibly can, and the effort being put forward by the, you know, the transfer station manager and so forth. I'd like to move forward with this. So, my opinion is that we should push forward in this, and I'd like to put it on the record, and I would just like to go revision right now without going through, you know, bid or anything else. There's been a lot of effort at this point. The savings are swollen front end. I don't think we're going to squeeze any more out of it by going through an RAP. So, I am strongly in favor of it. Before, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, I was really pushing the transfer station, but I understand why not, because of the efficiency, you get more bang for your buck over here at this point. And the opportunity isn't in future. If something changes, we can always attack that again. That would be a separate issue. As far as a possible new municipal building, that's in a different grade structure anyways at this point. So, I'm highly in favor of it.
Do you want to speak before I... No?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We've been working on this project now for probably at least three years. When we started, about three years ago, with the Energy Committee and Sharon Meeker, et cetera, et cetera, Reflexive Consultants in from UNH. We've done all kinds of things, headed in the direction of, are we going to go solar? I think, I think the time has come that we need to take the step, and let's do it. There's absolutely no reason not to.
Mr. Tappan?
Two questions. John Tappan, 187 Steppenstone Road. Since we have no questions about the analysis, which surprised me, I do have two questions. First is, the year-one utility rate is listed as .1296 dollars, which of course is not our actual utility rate. Our rate is .1692. I think I understand why, but it is not specifically explained here at all. And I also think that built into that is the assumption that the rate at which the power company will buy power from us will also continue to escalate at the same rate at which we expect their selling costs to escalate, the 2.5%. And so, again, I just wondered, what is your assurance that, in fact, the rate at which the power company is going to pay you for power is going to continue to increase at that rate?
Can I just make one comment about the number? If you look at the year-one analysis, the rate is listed correctly at .1692, and I suspect that on this blue sheet, perhaps the numbers were just transposed. No, the calculations are on 1.129?
I can answer that question if it's helpful.
Yeah, I think I know the answer, but please do, because there's a question.
Good question.
Need to jump here on that.
Come over here on the slide. Elijah Garrison with Revision Energy. So, great question, thank you. So, the year-one savings is a calculation of your behind, excuse me, your behind-the-meter rate. So, that's the energy that you offset full retail. That's your 16.9 cents that you see there. And then it's also blending the average of what you export to co-op, and that's 9.7 cents. So, it's taking what percent will you consume behind the meter, and what percent will you export, and that's a blended average. And what is the value per kilowatt-hour of solar that I expect? So, the second question, the co-op value of net metered energy is pegged to their actual cost of energy. So, it is correct to say that there is no guarantee it will have the exact same relationship over time. However, historically speaking, it essentially trends the same way, because it's based on their underlying costs in energy, which is driven by commodities, and that's why it continues to inflate and go up.
Okay, I have a question. So, in terms of the rates, because it's the co-op, how involved or not is the PUC on this? Do you know?
I guess, in what sense?
Well, so, does the PUC have to approve these rates, like it approves ever-source rates? And then the second question, is the net metering rate solely determined by the co-op?
So, yes, so the National Electric Co-op is an interesting organization in that it's semi-regulated. So, the PUC does have oversight into their rates and can step in. However, typically speaking, the National Electric Co-op sets their rates and it's approved by their members through their process. So, you know, essentially, if the co-op was doing something that was completely out of line, the PUC would step in. But in general, they sort of have their process, and it's a cooperative, it's designed to look out for its members.
Okay.
Ira Kenberg, Dwolpe Hill Road. Two questions. One, I've been on the website, the town website, trying to find this information. Is, am I missing it somewhere that the public can find all this data?
It would be contained within the Select Board agendas, which is where it's been presented thus far, while it's just been discussed.
Okay. And the other thing is, what is the ORYA to the investor on this project? Return on investment?
You mean, to the people that are going to own it, unless and until we buy it?
The investor that's putting this system in, what's the return on investment? I like to follow the money as a business owner. Follow the money.
Well, Revision can answer that. I mean, again, unless and until we buy it, we're just purchasing the energy that's produced.
The only thing I see, Larry, is there's listed here, there's a grant of a little under $13,000 that they're going to receive. That's the only number I have in terms of what they're getting.
Will they get the REC's?
The credits.
So, I can walk you through the deal structure quickly. So, essentially, the, it's a three-party transaction. Seems like everybody understands that pretty well. You know, somebody is putting up the money to pay for the project, there's a contractor that's actually installing the solar system, and there's a client, which is in this case the town, actually using the energy and seeing the benefit from the solar, right? And so, in that transaction, you know, there's investor capital that's coming in for the project. What we've stood up is called Revision Solar Impact Partners. And so, that structure, while I can't publicly disclose the internal rate of return of the investors in that program, I can certainly tell you that it is below what the market is calling for in terms of rate of return from, you know, if you were just looking for a standard third-party investor bringing capital to the table. So, we have a specific program with local impact investors that are interested in solar projects in New Hampshire, and in fact, will take specific interest in this project. And so, they are willing to accept a below-market return. So, it's not zero, but it's not, they're not looking for Wall Street returns. So, that's all I can say publicly. If anybody wants to learn more about Revision Solar Impact Partners, they're certainly welcome to go on our website and start investigating the program a little more. Any other questions?
One of the things, Julie, do we have anything that if we were to just buy it, what our cost and our savings would be?
Well, I think they show the cost of it is what?
171.
They call it the 172. Right, 171 change, I can't read that one. 171 and change. So, presumably, that would be the cost to us, but then we would also be on the hook from day one for insuring it, maintaining it. I mean, again, I don't know whether the monthly fee would be any different, whether we own it or a third-party investor owns it, in terms of what the maintenance agreement would be. Is it still the $600 and some dollars a month?
Yeah, so, while the investor owns the solar system, they will ensure, operate, maintain the system. So, they are responsible for that. There's no cost for that to town of Lee. What you see in the out-years after buyout is the, yeah, it's essentially the same, it's the same agreement that Revision Energy Incorporated makes with the impact investor. Yeah, so the program's the same. You get the same level of coverage.
I'll just jump in there for a second, try to put a little more clarity on the question. So, you're looking at it if you were typically to purchase it. So, here's, you would be the one that would get the $13,000 rebate, would come to the town?
I thought we just barely did get the rebate.
No?
They do?
They can, yes.
They do, they can. Okay.
You would receive their renewable energy credits and be able to sell those on the market, they're materially that valuable at this point, it's around $10 a rack. You would receive, obviously, you wouldn't be paying the 10.5 cents to the, 11.5 cents to the investor. So, what you would see is the total savings per, if you look at the savings after the buyout, that would give you the relative savings. But I would say, you factor in the rebate, you factor in the recs, and your savings, you're probably looking at 10 to 12-year payback, because you're not able to take advantage of that. But that's rough numbers off the top of my head, I haven't run it, but maybe a little bit more. Glad to run that for you if that...
Well, it sounds like the other two gentlemen are in favor. I'm not. And I know we've been doing this for a while, but we step to numbers and stuff, so I just would be more comfortable. The other thing is in terms of acquisition, we're potentially acquiring, even if we do the buyout, a hundred thousand dollars, we're kind of breaching our own acquisition policy, I would think.
In what sense?
Well, we're leasing it, kind of, right?
Correct, yep.
So, it's an expensive thing, so usually, we go out to look in terms of different acquisition places. So, I would think...
We do, yes, we often go out to bid, but not always.
We have the privilege. We've used it before.
Oh, we've done this. Anything that we bought that was that expensive, we've gone out to bid. I don't remember anything that we bought that was that expensive that we said, "Oh, no, we're not going to go out to bid." So, I didn't bid anything, so...
I'd like to move forward. So, I'm going to move to grant the town administrator approval to enter into a solar power purchase agreement after legal review with Revision Energy for the construction of our 56-kilowatt solar array to be located in the westly side of the public safety complex.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any other comments?
No.
No comments.
Who's in favor?
I.
Who's opposed? Nay.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You and Julie will work this out.
Yep.
Item number four, net load. This will seem a little smaller than the conversation you just had.
You never can tell.
To recap, we're why there's interested in expanding opportunities for use of mass way field. So, we want to convert that to a softball base field, which means taking out the grass of the infield, converting that to dirt, which would allow continued use of the T-ball age groups that currently utilize that during the baseball season, but also expand their softball image, which is a goal of ours to have in the next year. At the last meeting, I requested that I meet with the Recreation Commission to get their thoughts and ideas on the project. I won't speak for Larry, but I thought that leaving that meeting, it was a good idea from their perspective as well, but he wants to come up and talk to me a little more.
At our meeting last Tuesday, we did discuss this with Matt, and the Recreation Commission voted unanimously to go ahead with the project. However, I would like to advise the Select Board of one caveat we'd like to see. ORYA has not been very good about maintaining the fields. If you go over and take a look at the ball field today, it's overgrown again. We're very disappointed in that. If we go ahead, well, we'd like to see this project go ahead, but we need to make sure that ORYA holds up their end of the bargain in maintaining these fields. They cannot become overrun with the crabgrass and the rundown condition that's taken place over there. But other than that, we have approved for this project to go forward. But other than that, we have approved for this project to go forward.
Can I ask you a question, Larry? In terms of when you say the fields are rundown, what do you mean by that? What is that?
Just go over to Massway Field, take a look at it.
Oh, Massway Field.
Nobody's maintained that in years and it's been under agreement that it's to be maintained. Last year, we've had virtually no maintenance on the baseball field at River Park until we made this an issue. And towards the end of the year, they started working on it, but of course the weather moved in. And then this spring, I did finish it up, but go over there and take a look at it now.
Okay, thanks.
I can address that a little bit. We always address those issues for use, so we'll have a fall ball baseball season. And we will make sure that that's in playable condition for our sports that use it. Ahead of every spring with all of the baseball fields that we use, we have a field cleanup day and address any major issues with hillside landscaping, either what he calls grinding the infield or topical spraying. When it goes into offseason, there's not consistent use. That is when crabgrass does come in and, you know, make it look bad until we are planning for use again. So the new field, Steve Bullock has graciously offered to drag after mowing, which Hillside's recommendation is that you cut back on about eighty percent of any creeping in growth from crabgrass during the offseason, which is great. So, we're working on a topical spraying campaign with Hillside and that would remain consistent moving forward if it's successful this year. It's tough to keep up with those things with the amount of mowing in the offseason when there is no use. But when it's in use, it looks good.
On several occasions, I've passed Massway Field and I see soccer...
Little children.
Playing soccer or practicing or something, there's a couple of coaches out there and so on. Will this impact that?
Those would not be ORYA-related, that would probably be the general public or some other...
Would the field still be in such that they would also be able to practice?
Yep, the grass area past the infield, so the current infield, you can picture where that dirt area is, that would not be extended at all, so that area between the dirt field and the tennis courts would remain the same.
Okay.
I have a question about when they spray. Does that mean people need to stay away? I mean, what's, what are the rules regarding that? Or will you can answer that, or will Steve Bullock can answer that?
I'm sure Steve's got a lot more expertise on this. From what Gary told me in our last conversation, I don't believe that there is any specific period of time that people need to stay off it from a topical spray. Steve, I think you know the specific type of chemicals and stuff that Hillside would use.
The reentry limit for the chemicals he would use would just be dry time. So as soon as the surface is dry, it's good. It's one of the quickest ones there is and it works very effectively. But it's just dry time. So on a nice sunny day, you're just putting a mist down, it dries in two or three minutes. Not a big deal.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for more? I move to approve converting the baseball field, that town field into a softball field until I, Oyster River Youth Association, turn into a contract with Hillside Landscaping Incorporated to perform the work. Oyster River Youth Association will bear all costs associated with this project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Double second.
A double second.
Any questions?
No.
Oh, did the paper say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for my motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number five, Steve Bullock, Bullock Works Committee.
All right, so I'm here to like to talk about the mixed paper. About a month ago, I called to try to move what paper we had, which at the time was about forty thousand pounds. And I didn't hear back for a month, they were searching. I called last Thursday again, they still haven't been able to find anyone to take it and now I'm up to about fifty-three thousand pounds sitting on the ground I can't get rid of. I was informed on Thursday that no mills want mixed paper that has what they call wet pack paper in it. So wet pack papers, any soda box, beer box, or something that would go in the fridge or the freezer that holds food in it, and other waxy papers. So I sent the email to everybody to let them know that, what I was going to do. The guys that work at the transfer station decided that on Saturday, they were going to try to police it and have it get sorted out, so we didn't have to do my suggestion. So it's sorted out. And, and two Saturdays, a Tuesday and a Thursday, we don't even have a bale of regular paper that we would normally have like two or three out of. So that gives you an idea on how much stuff we were taking in that I can't get rid of. They went and said, no waxy papers today. I can take cereal boxes and they didn't take them this past week. And I can take pasta boxes, like the hard pasta comes in, I can take like the pill boxes, like the leave and Tylenol boxes. It's those things, specifically paper that when you try to get it wet, it still holds its strength that I cannot accept. They won't, no mills will take it. Because their process is, they take the paper and they put it in a water bath with a chemical and it pulps it back up, that wet pack paper is made to be wet and still hold its strength, so it won't break down like they want, so they're refusing to take it. I run into other problems too. We've been putting five-gallon plastic jugs in the P, which it is number one plastic, the mills refuse to take it. If they have one of those in the bale of plastic, they reject the whole load, which I found out Thursday too.
Wait, so like a gallon of milk?
No, like the five-gallon water bottle jugs.
Five gallons, sorry, my bad.
Those are number one, they technically can go in, but the mills aren't, the machines aren't big enough. So if one of those goes in a plastic bale, they'll reject the whole load. Yes.
Steve, I assume the other towns are going through the same thing.
So, I called Rawlinsford Thursday, they have not taken wet pack paper ever. They just take, their mixed paper contains newspaper, so they're making more bales, we separate the newspaper out. I have a brochure in my office from the Pittsfield Barnstead area one, they don't take any waxy paper whatsoever in their mixed paper. So other towns are doing it. And I think we were just lucky that we, for a while, that there were people that would take it and now it's gotten to the point where I think the markets have gotten so bad, they don't want anything to do with it. So this is where we're at. They did tell me today that hopefully next week, they may have found someone to take forty-four thousand pounds of my paper. That still leaves me with ten thousand pounds bale on the ground I can't do anything with.
Can I just comment? We can do something with it, we can get rid of it as MSW at sixty-three dollars a ton.
Yes, we can break the bales apart and try to sort it out. So I think the last mixed paper was thirty-five dollars a ton to get rid of. This one's probably going to be that or a little more. Or, like she said, we just dump it all in MSW with sixty-six and change to get rid of it.
If you thought about, one of the things, I was one of the ones that was, I don't want to say chastised, but spoken to about putting certain things in the, in the paper thing.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, I was a big boy, I took it, took it like a big boy. But the thing is, how are you going to educate the public? Because the public is used to doing what we're doing.
I'm, I'm well aware and that's why I was torn on how to handle it. I mean, I found out Thursday, was leaving to go on vacation for a week Saturday, I kind of was put between a rock and a hard place with it, so... My plan was to just have them keep doing the same old thing and then we'd deal with it when I got back. But they decided they wanted to try to, to take it upon themselves to do it, so all the power tools they wanted to try to do it, it just helps.
Well, so, that's fine.
My plan was next Solid Waste Committee meeting, to try to come up with a, a plan. And by the time I found out, it was almost, it was too late for E-Crier and it was not exactly the right time. It was bad timing.
The gentleman that spoke to me seemed to imply that I should have known this ahead of time. So I'm not sure what he's telling other people, but I made him feel like I was an idiot, I was supposed to know this, but I didn't.
Okay, I'll deal with it.
And I know what you were talking and sending out emails about, you're having problems, but there was nothing that said that we're not going to start doing the shiny stuff, so...
Well, I think it's going to be a tough, it's going to be a tough project because when we started, we went through the same thing, but to be honest with you, Matt treated us very well. However, I was surprised at what is in this classification of waxed finish paper, et cetera, that would not be acceptable. And it's, it's really a variety of stuff, it's not just mere six-packs. It's, it's a lot, so that's going to be a pretty good education process if we want the people to weed it out before they put it in.
Today, I talked to them more and I told them I wanted a spec sheet on what's acceptable from the actual vendor. I haven't gotten it back yet, but once I get that spec sheet, essentially that's what I was going to go with, is what they, obviously, is what's buying.
And, so, am I qualified? So, once you figure this all out, it's going to be in the E-Crier?
Yeah, hopefully, if I figure it out by tomorrow.
Did they ever print the signs?
Signs? So they, they put signs on the, on the wall, but the problem is, is like, they came in Saturday morning and took the piece of wood down, they had everything on it and tried to put the other things up.
You're going to need samples to show, you know...
Yes, but like they have right now, no cereal boxes, cereal boxes are acceptable. The problem was, is at the time, we were told by one individual in NRA, no waxy paper. The person we actually deal with all the time, Heather, who I was talking to this morning, clarified it a lot more. So there's a lot of things, waxy paper is acceptable, the only things that are not, if it holds food or a beverage and it goes in your fridge or freezer, that is what's not acceptable.
But you're, you're right, Kerry, I mean, we might want to make a big display board of the actual items, so people... Because, I mean, if you told me wet pack paper, I would not know what you were talking about.
I know.
And that's...
We have displays up for people. The problem is, is what was on the display before was almost all the wet pack stuff, that's right. And now, all the stuff that was on the display is no longer acceptable, so we had issues.
I think it's just, there's just going to be a learning curve and there's going to be a period of time where, yes, it's going to be confusing.
That's strict, that's right.
But the stuff that's on the floor right now?
Yep.
Just mix it in with MSW.
Some of it, I think, I can get rid of cheaper, but the other, after this first load, I don't think it's...
Yeah, it's to hold on to it and everything else, just mix. That's just my opinion, just mix it in. Or something, but can't have you guys running around picking through paper.
That was my feeling, but I don't want to talk to you guys about that for...
It's ridiculous to have staff do that kind of thing.
You guys said no. Well, they said no to burning trees and limbs, bush. So I think they also say no...
No, there's, there's a place in Pembroke called Energy or Trash Energy that burns. And I haven't called them yet, but I'm going to call and see if they'll take it. That might be a cheaper alternative.
Well, I think if we can, if the board is to instruct him to get rid of it the cheapest way possible and let him deal with it, that's his job and...
If you got to throw it in... If you got to put in MSW, if you can't find any way out, just do it.
All right.
Yeah, I like that, that sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, don't run away, I have a question.
Okay, sorry.
Any movement on our chipper question that we had for you?
Chipper.
Yes, they're very, very expensive.
How much are they? Very expensive.
For a chipper that'll handle all that stuff, you're looking at eighty to a hundred and ten thousand.
Well, that's...
That's used.
That's something you wouldn't... Yeah, and that would be used on new.
Not new? Wow. Jeez. All right.
So that's fifteen or twenty years, then someone comes and picks it up.
Well, you have to ask those questions, so, find out, so... All right. Anything else?
Busy right there.
For skin. Oh, and you're going to deal with this other thing in your policy statement for the transfer?
Oh, well, maybe let's ask if all is here.
Okay, that'd be great.
So, the transfer station designated public forum policy, which we had adopted a number of years ago in response to an issue that was happening at the transfer station, Mr. Bullock pointed out the other day that it needs to be amended because we've moved the transfer station. So the swap where the designated public forum area was is now being utilized.
It's all dumpsters, because it used to be where the swap shop used to be, now the swap shops have moved down front.
So, at Mr. Dr. LaCourse's suggestion though, we might want to make it more specific than saying directly in front of the swap shop?
Yeah, right now, it just says, you know, directly in front of the swap shop. I want to contain it even more, at least put some parameters around it. I know the wall is over there, right, there's the wall, but I don't want people walking into the roadway, so... So I want them to be, I don't want that kind of suggestion, I don't want them slipping behind where the middle area is. So can we work and get some better word? Or even if you had a, a map or something in there drawing to show people, so when they see the policy, they'll know exactly... I think that'll help you as well, staff, so you won't have to see these people. If it blooms out, I want to contain it as much as possible. So I think the policy looks good, the way it's been rewritten, I just want to tighten it up a little bit. I think that would help us some more.
Mr. LaCourse is talking about the forum areas. It says, "The following areas are hereby designated a public forum which individuals may engage in expressive activities." And so he doesn't want those expressive activities anywhere else besides in the front of the swap shop.
But it's contained, a little bit more. So in front of the swap shop, but not on the road surface, not on this.
So like on the gravel surface?
Yeah, something like that. So somewhere that you can easily contain it if you have to.
All right.
Okay. So do you want to tweak it and then come back?
Sure.
Anything else from Mr.?
No, good, thank you.
Thanks.
Good.
Thank you, Steve. Item number six, Bill Hohn, Conservation Commission Chairman.
Conservation Commission is requesting permission to remove and replace the observation platform that is in the lead bog. We will need a wetland permit from DES. And we have, have volunteers who are willing to help with this. But I think it's going to be necessary because of the, the volume of work involved and particularly in constructing the new structure and installing it, that we may need to work with the highway department. And Conservation Commission is willing to pay the hourly rate of the worker who is used by the highway department for this work. Randy Stevens has offered to, to do that, frankly, had offered to volunteer to do the entire project with some assistance from other members. But it's too much to ask of any individual. And we, we wanted to compensate whomever it was. And the way we can do that without creating liability for a contractor is to work through town government and have the highway department do the work and then compensate them for the work done. Questions?
Good question.
How big is the platform now?
The ramp to the platform is fifteen feet long. Platform itself is nine by nine.
And what is it made of now?
It is made of wood that is quite rotten.
Is it redwood or is it...?
No, it's not red. No.
So it's just...
It's, it's definitely deteriorating.
And you were going to replace it with what?
The intent is to replace it with, we've looked at a variety of options. Using red cedar, the expected lifetime would be five years. Using aluminum with a PCV planking, the lifetime is twenty-five years. And so we have opted to go that route. And so, we have opted to go that route.
And a question for Steve, then. Steve? You comfortable working with those things?
Vinyl and PVC and aluminum?
Sure.
Yeah, let me go ahead.
I'm good at hippo. How's your hippo still?
Yeah, we have chest waders.
Okay, so I'm making sure.
But the idea is for one individual place to do it, not a whole group of...
I don't, I don't know yet. Randy, I thought was gonna oversee it and stuff like that. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so everything's good with you?
Yeah, when we get it, it should come with directions and how to put it together, so...
What is it, Tommy Dock? Is that what it was?
Yes.
Tommy Dock, right?
Yes.
Randy and I went down and looked at the bog and took some measurements and stuck a pipe down there to see if we could find bottom. And you can find bottom several times. Actually, you find bottom and you think you're there, and then you press harder, and it breaks through, and it goes down another three feet, and then you press harder again, and then it goes down another three feet. So, it's not, it's not waders that are gonna, that are gonna work in that, in the bog. But it, it looked to us like a pretty straightforward project, actually. But it's, it's got its downside, only because of where it's at. I had a concern, actually, about, because of the false bottoms, I had a concern about some kind of small railing on there if we needed something to keep smaller children out. Because, because you go down, you think you're standing on something, and it doesn't support up to a certain limit. And then it breaks through, and it goes, it goes deeper. So, I just wondered if, in your opinion, we needed to put some kind of railing up there? I don't know.
One of our commission members, Catherine Fisher, leads pastway school nature walks in the town forest on an almost daily basis, and uses the bog platform quite a bit. She feels quite strongly that a railing creates more of a hazard rather than less of a one.
Okay.
Because kids will be tempted to get up on it and balance, and... Additionally, Randy has been able to drive down through the peak and establish firm footing on solid soil. So, you know, I trust his judgment on that. And it's going to be, you know, long lengths of pipe that this dock will be standing on. But that's what's required, and that's what will be done.
Okay. Any machinery? I think that was one of the questions. I'm not sure if that's gonna decide yet. Any machinery need to get access in there?
No.
So, it'd be all hand hauling and...
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Randy? Okay?
Yep.
Where's mine?
No, I don't think there is one.
There is nothing. It's a nod, go ahead.
Yeah, we need getting written material, so...
Alright.
It's a wicked enough move forward.
Wicked enough. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Tom Johnsonfield, please do a quick...
The board should already have the, this is our annual asset forfeiture audit. This is like fifty-three or fifty-eight dollars in the account. Something we have to go through every year, have the board sign off on.
Fifty-six, ninety-nine.
Yeah.
So, no forfeitures lately?
No, it's been pretty quiet.
Okay, well, that's kind of a good thing for the department. Any questions?
No, move forward.
Alright, I move to certify that the current fiscal year budget reported on the form is true and accurate. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just one motion passes. Do you wanna sign that afterwards? Alright, item number eight, Chief of Labor and Town Administration.
So, we have been gathering documents. We'll request that the auditors do preparations for the fiscal team. By the way, they are scheduled to make their first visit to town hall on August twenty-third, which is the next day. I can make a good picture. And one of the documents that they require is the Board of Selectmen questionnaire. So, what you had in your packet was answering for you, but obviously, it was just a draft. So, if you have any questions or wanna change any information, just let us know.
Did you tweak that thing that I saw to you about, or not?
No, but I wanted to wait and see what the other selectmen had to say. So, Selectmen Buggbee wants to change number...
Seven.
Seven, from every two weeks, how about regularly?
Regularly?
Regularly.
I like that better. And that could be interpreted as needed.
Right. My intent is to send them to both the department heads and the board every two weeks. I've been sending them to the department heads every two weeks since February. And I think the board requested them starting in April.
Everything else looks good.
Have you got other questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Okay. I will make that change, and then let Mr. Buggbee know. You can just come in and sign it, and we'll get it to you.
Sounds good, okay.
Thank you. Fund balance policy. Our policy is that every year, we revisit the fund balance policy and make changes if the board so desires, or not. So, do you have any questions, and we recommend changes?
Is it the same one that you signed last time?
Yes. The same as last year, with the exception of it is now the two thousand nineteen fund balance policy.
I think that's what we decided.
Good. It's fine.
Okay. So, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the... So, would this be the two thousand twenty fund balance policy as presented?
Well, it's called the two thousand nineteen. We do it, for some reason, we do it by calendar year.
Alright, so I move to approve the two thousand nineteen fund balance policy as presented. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion passes.
And that's all I have.
Okay, item number nine, move to approve the consent attendance presented. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion passes. I'm signing likewise.
Do you wanna send them after the non-public?
Though, who's here for the non?
It's the chief, right?
Chief Johnsonfield.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
So, put, sign it on hold. Item number ten. I move to enter a non-public session, Hampshire R S A ninety-one dash eight four three, number two A. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Brown? Gee. In my favor? Mr. Lecourse, are you...
Yes.
I move to seal the minutes for the non-public session. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? Mr. Brown? Are you in favor of sealing the minutes, sir? Are you in favor of sealing the minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Lecourse?
Yes.
Item number twelve, Miss Leland's Unfinished Business. Chief, could you talk to me a little about the sound violations to experience? Were experienced over the weekend?
So, basically, it sounds, when you say sound violation, it sounds a lot worse than it is. They had a number of two-second intervals. And it was all during the ISMA Super Modified Show, which is the big blocks. We expect that it happens every year. Actually, not as bad this year as it was last year. So, it was more of a... Hey, just to let you know, yeah, we expected. We didn't get it, we didn't receive any noise complases from any residents or non-residents. We didn't, no, we did not. This is just based off the sound meter, the decelerator, that we knew there were the violations. And then, out of the, I think it was twenty-five, fifteen of them actually came during practice sessions, which we technically only act on feature races. So, now you're down to ten, ten two-second little blips. But it was just, you know, I wanted to let Joe know, so I have some ideas on what we can do, and he's gonna talk to ISMA and see if there's something to do with it, and so we can get to a point where we don't have any, any violation. So, it was more of an F Y I type thing.
Okay.
And just, you know, the track knows, yeah, yeah, we are still monitoring.
Did they do fireworks this weekend?
No.
What was all the fireworks I heard last night?
I know, I heard a lot of fireworks last night, too.
I thought the track was having a special...
Yeah, I don't know if one of the campgrounds was doing it, but yeah, I heard it as well.
So, it just wasn't for me?
Yeah, I don't know, no, no, I heard it.
It was quite loud.
I heard it, too.
I was looking out the port, see if I could see some pyrotechnics.
Yeah, I heard it, too.
So, I don't think it was coming south east of us.
I thought it was the guys in the quarry shooting, you know, they shoot their ARs back there a couple times.
Yeah, no, it was definitely fireworks. Yeah, it was definitely fireworks. I suspected it was one of the campgrounds.
And also, I hear through the grapevine that there's no bingo? Because bingo was...
No, that has to go, be voted on at a public meeting, or a war nautical.
Right. The legislative body has to approve it if we want to have bingo where somebody makes money, put it that way. We could have bingo, like, for fun, but, yeah.
So, we're looking at maybe doing a flea market.
A flea market instead?
Yeah, to draw people in, and then we've got, a friend of mine's a police officer. He's a comedian, so he's gonna do it and come in and do a half-hour, forty-five-minute comedy show for dinner, or during dinner, I think it is, or... It's at seven o'clock, so I guess...
So, something to do between...
Yeah, something to keep people there. We'll have the ice cream social. Keep people there in between the fireworks, before the fireworks start. So, still working on the car show. I don't know if we're gonna do like, will you vote on the cars, or we'll just let people come show their cars? Then nobody gets slighted, because he didn't win. There was a little bit, a couple of noses out of joint last year, so...
As always, it almost...
Oh, yeah, yeah, so you eliminate it. Just bring your car, talk about your car, show it off, and be done.
Okay, so, alright.
That's it.
Great, and thank you for...
And don't forget, ice cream social, non-public.
Bye.
Tomorrow night thirty?
Sixty-eight.
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 Come on up. What's tomorrow night?
Ice cream. Ice cream social.
How much is it again? Three dollars, still, or nine?
It was a five dollar.
Buy it on the website.
On the website.
Oh, you can eat it.
Oh, you can eat it.
So, do far people, let police people eat for free?
Well, I do, because I serve.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
As long as it's not hard as a rock.
Then you pay with the wrist, don't you?
Yeah, no, it's a good time.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
I don't know, I'm gonna give you a fight now. I think you got, I think Scott got the last one for me.
I was just wondering if you're signed. Anything else, gentlemen? Anything? Oh, you asked earlier about the sale from the sheriff. So, that's still, it's still waiting. Anything else?
No, not really.
The planning board won't be until next week, so nothing new in the planning board at this time.
Rocket is this Saturday?
This coming Saturday.
Yeah, what time is it? Noon to, what is it?
Nine. Nine to noon?
Nine to noon, something like that.
On the website.
I volunteered to help, Larry.
That's good.
I just mentioned it, in case somebody sees it, they'll at least get that as their...
Essentially, I'm just talking about the park. For the past two weeks, they've had the, maybe three, they've had the music in the park, been very, very, very well attended. Surprise, I mean, very well. Plus, they started doing some hamburgers and hot dogs and things like that. But the people are really enjoying it. I've been to the past three, and they're just really having one. They're having some really nice, good talent there. But the people are really enjoying it.
Is the parking lot full?
The crowd is growing each time, so...
But is the parking lot full?
I'm sorry?
Is the parking lot full?
I mean, the parking lot is not full.
Okay.
But it's, I would say it's fifty percent, fifty, sixty percent anyway.
You're gonna be in the road.
Yeah, well, some of it is van. You know, Kirkwood Corners is bringing, is bringing people over, and there's another one also that are bringing people over. But it's doing very, very well. People are very, are really enjoying it.
Can I ask you a question about the voluntary park sign? I should've asked Steve when he was here. Do you, do you know anything in terms of...
Other than... Oh. I talked to the guy.
Yep.
He was gonna get us a prize. Get us a prize, you're right. He was gonna go assess it, get us a prize, because he needs to get it done before the...
Yes, it'd be nice.
So, can somebody...
Yeah.
Rattle his cage, or whatever you do to get his attention. The other thing I just wanted to mention, we've done it in previous years, so I don't know if you wanna do it again. I think there's money in the budget, but the Volunteer of the Year Award, we should start thinking about that.
Absolutely.
So, if we can put out to committees and commissions, if they can submit their nominations. I assume you're...
Are we gonna do it, Derek?
I don't know, this is why I'm asking.
Okay.
Because we should start and plan it. If we're interested in doing that, one, we should send out seat nominations, and then pass somebody to arrange...